Oh, yeah, the, um, the...
All sections.
Which one, which one was it?
I mean, really.
That makes more sense. Makes more sense.
The discussion item. No, the discussion item.
Yeah, I get it. Oh, yeah, those are notes, those are... Those are minutes.
Right here.
Yeah, oh, I, I was on the other side.
Discussion on Arches National Park regulation system. It can't, it can't be here, so let's, let's split the table. Cause she could be here on the, on the following, on the 19th, showing my display.
And then what about this, Karen Dolan said she wanted me to get back until 6:15. They wrote an email, it was just before we came here.
Well, we can't have public carriages until 6:00 anyway, right?
Right.
Oh, I guess we can if there's not money.
Oh, yeah. See how smooth it goes on.
Jesus, the woman. I would get such a kick out of that, I hate to do that.
Okay, uh, here Tara, I'm gonna get, uh, give, give back whoever goes to... Thank you so much. Get it off my desk, okay.
The only thing that's long to read was, uh...
Chris, do we have, uh, uh, minutes for, uh, January 16th and June 19th? Are we gonna postpone those again?
Uh, yeah, those have to be postponed.
Okay.
And November 20th also.
Okay. Thank you.
Keeping one fishing?
So you got, you got, you got beat out?
Yeah.
Oh, man! Oh, no! I would've had the damn thing swallow two sinkers.
But it takes a lot to get out of here, it takes a lot of money. It sounds like a lot, but it's like, it's a lot, just like... You better attack and stuff.
I think he, he might be breaking even because he, he usually brings home a lot of things.
Yeah. He's like right on the, you know, Australia, like, it's like... Big one, yeah. I'll bet it's over. Fishing and flying, that's what it is. Bill's to be approved. I said, "How do I get you to do that?" And he says, "It takes a hundred grand." Yeah. I'm like, "No, that's..."
Don't think so. Not today.
No, that depended on it. I just wanna, I just wanna sit, I don't wanna have to fight. I just wanna...
I don't know if you saw that Jalen's was just gonna be a little late.
Yeah, I did see that way, um, um... It's already four o'clock. Yeah, do you know which one of these things, these, uh, um, they do, so they call for a head count?
That's what happens when you get here so early.
Payment bills, okay.
It's like it's four o'clock.
Yeah, that is a... Roll call. Okay. About four o'clock. So if we could gather our respective forces together here, I will call to order the March 5th, 2019 meeting of the Grand County Council. And, uh, the first order of business is pledge of allegiance. And Caitlin, would you be so kind as to lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Maybe you forgot.
Thank you, yeah, we were, we were wondering about that.
That's why I came.
Yeah, exactly. So the first order of business is approval of the minutes, and I'm understanding from Mr. Baird that the January, uh, June and November minutes are not present here, so I would call for an approval of the minutes of, uh, Item D and Item E.
Uh, I, it's 19th?
February 19th to February 26th. Motion to approve. Are there any discussion, changes?
Well, we can have the discussion after we have the vote.
Okay.
There was a typo, I don't see it in front of me, uh, there was a discussion, and instead it said, "had" and said "hard."
Which one was that, Mary?
I'm trying to find it. I haven't, I, I marked it on it, and it just said, "so, uh, there you..." Here's the typo.
That's impossible.
No.
Yeah, well...
It was on the, uh, second page of the 19th regular meeting. It was on, second page, Item C, the discussion was hard regarding...
Well, that's true.
It was hard.
See, I told you it's not a typo.
It was a typo.
It was a fact.
It was hard, it was different, it sounded different. Is that what you wanted?
No.
There was a...
But it goes.
We want carrions, dude.
We had a difficult, or we had a hard discussion regarding. That was all I saw.
Any other, um, discussion on minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those approve, or disapproving, or abstaining? None? There being none, the motion carries, thank you.
Can you state how it carried?
How it carried? It carried, uh, two, three, well, four to zero.
Hard. Four to zero?
Well, I'm not, I'm not allowed to vote. I can find five to zero.
Okay, thank you.
I get to vote.
With corrections.
Unless you didn't wanna vote, you could've just stand there.
Thinking about it.
You're one.
Okay, uh, moving along, ratification of the payment of bills.
Oh. Sorry. All right, uh, the Grand County bills to be approved for 3, 5, 2019. Total bills, $640,238.59. Total payroll, $244,874.77. And total bills and payroll, $885,113.36.
All those in favor of...
Second.
Yeah, I need a second. Yep. Roll call vote. Greg?
Aye.
Mary?
Yes.
Curtis?
Aye.
Me, aye. Rory?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, general council reports and future considerations. Greg, you wanna start that out?
Yep, I'll start. Attended the museum, uh, meeting on the 19th of February. Yeah. It was a good meeting, uh, they're coming along with their renovations. Uh, we're planning a, uh, members-only, uh, visit to the museum coming up, I think it's toward the end of the month. But it's looking good for the museum, uh, rebuilding, coming up with that. I was not able to attend the Forest Service thing because I was sitting on a, a board interviewing a candidate for county fire ward. We had a good candidate, he was very well-qualified, uh, he was tired of working for the federal government and not being paid for 35 days, so he was looking to go to work for somebody else, the state and the county. I really look forward to the guy coming. I, he declined because he couldn't find housing. He's got a wife and two kids, and, and, uh, when he looked around for a place to live, wasn't anymore. So, we lost him, so we're still looking for a fire ward. And for those of you that are keeping up with the rocks that are falling around, there's a lot falling. Uh, I've been walking my dog every morning for the last, well, every morning. And for the last week, there's been a rock fall in Castle Valley off of the rim every day, every morning, so, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Mary?
Okay, uh, we had, I met with Ca- Caitlin, Caitlin about the cleanup committee on the 20th, and we started drafting the resolution, and then, and we met again on, uh, and with Curtis and Joe and Caitlin on the 26th, and we should have a resolution for the cleanup committee to be presented to this, uh, body next meeting, so I'm really excited about that.
Depending on legal review. We'll need to get legal review, but it's coming soon.
It is, if not next meeting, the following, as soon as we get legal review. On the 20th, I went to the Dark Skies, uh, presentation at the Grand Center, it was very interesting. They did this amazing, uh, demonstration where they turned out the lights and they had, um, a light that wasn't shaded down. And, you know, we, we all looked at it and we thought, and then they shaded it, and you could see so much better, and right behind it was the, you know, toy rattlers made, ready to pass, and, and you could see it when the lights were shining down, but you couldn't see it when they were, you know, going out. So it was a really good demonstration, and I'm excited about the possibility of doing some type of Dark Sky, uh, through, you know, legislation. Uh, on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday of last week, I went up to the Capitol. It was interesting, I spoke with Representative Duckworth, and the monies for the Dalton Springs and Willow Springs looks pretty promising, she felt very comfortable about that. I had lunch with Hinkins, and he was working on Senate Bill 181, which would make it possible for us to have horse races with gambling, uh, which would really help our arena. It would take us out of debt real fast, but it failed. It's a bummer, but he, he put, he sent it back to rural, to the rural.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's gonna be worked on, and hopefully this summer maybe, in the interim or election, but I think this is something we could get behind him on because it would maybe turn our arena into a moneymaker as opposed to what it is that they keep doing. Yeah. So that was good. It was interesting, I went to the meeting with, uh, UAC. It was interesting. I, you know, I have mixed feelings. I went to the UDOT yesterday, and there's an exciting possibilities of agencies working together, I'm really excited about it. We all three were there.
Yep.
And, uh, possibility of UDOT, Sitla and San Juan County and Moab and Grand County working together, so that's pretty exciting, and that's what, uh, I did for the last two weeks in Clars County work.
Great. Okay, um, let's see, for starters, I, um, uh, let's see, conferenced into the, the U.S. Forest Service Coordinating Agency Committee meeting, Coordinating Agency meeting, and it was the first meeting, uh, since the federal shutdown, and it was largely a walkthrough of the timeline, getting everything back on track. So fall of 2019, they'll be submitting their notice of intent, um, per the NEPA guideline. Winter of 2019, spring 2020, uh, they'll be finalizing the draft plan, draft, uh, EIS, um, and summer of 2020, they'll have, uh, let's see, a draft ROD, I'm trying to, Record of Decision, um, on their, uh, EIS, and winter 2020, they're hoping for the Record of Decision. And so, um, as a cooperating agency, um, we need to be working with them and, and kinda start to submit those comments, um, and, uh, that's just gonna have to come through, uh, kinda these, for, these, these agency meetings and then just spending time down at the, at the local office. I've been in contact with our local forester, Mike, and, uh, kinda digging in on that. Greg and, and Evan and I attended the open house that they'd had in, I think it was November, and there's a lot of material, there, as a cooperating agency, we have a access to a folder that's kinda like a Dropbox, that, that they're, that they're sharing, it's called, uh, it's something different than Dropbox, but all the material's in there, so we need to make sure everyone has access to it, but, um, really the message has been, you know, you guys will be able to provide comment all through this process, but we've yet to, to submit official, uh, comment on the process from Grand County that's, that's very substantive. Castle Valley has been active in the process, there's been a representative from the city of Moab, um, you know, and largely there's, there's large wilderness proposals that kinda overlay the watershed, and so really it's just working with them as they identify the management criteria, um, you know, for these areas. And so, um, I'm doing my best to stay on top of that, and, and I'd like to have, you know, something for the council, probably as a discussion item, you know, the next, you know, I'd say month, month and a half, for us to start to, uh, you know, kinda develop our, our comment form, and, and, you know, get some consensus there, and then, and then eventually get it approved and sent over to them, but, but really they've got an open-door policy with this as, as a cooperating agency, and their timelines change pretty significantly, you know, periodically, so, um, you know, they'll, they'll keep us in tune as the timeline changes, but, um, attended the cleanup committee meeting with Mary, uh, we've got a, uh, had someone respond to the RFP that we'd sent out, and they're kinda working their way through the process. As Mary mentioned, we'll have that resolution, um, you know, to the council soon to kinda formalize that committee and give everyone an idea of what that committee's gonna be doing to assist the, you know, the county contractor, um, that, uh, that's gonna be, you know, working for us to get, to get that compliance for our, our, uh, junk that's, that's out of compliance with county code. Uh, I attended the Planning Commission meeting very briefly, um, and was hoping to, to hear their discussion about the moratorium, and they actually shelved it till later on in the meeting, and I thought I'd missed it, so I didn't catch much of that. I had a nice conversation with the, um, the Arches National Park Superintendent a couple weeks ago regarding the economic analysis that they're doing, and at the time, I was told, they, they had press released that, uh, there would be an open house April 4th at the library where they would release the results of the economic assessment, um, and then they had later press released that they were gonna postpone the open house until the summer, but at some point between those few days, the, the report became available because the Moab sun story was the first time that I had, I had seen that the report was out. So I've since spent my time looking through that, and we've got that on the agenda later, and, um, and, uh, so that, that's something that we'll continue to discuss, and then as far as the UDOT meeting that I attended, Mary and, Mary and Terry, uh, were there as well, and, um, there's been a lot of UDOT meetings, you know, since we've, we stuck our nose in the hotspot process, and, um, there's so much planning going on, I mean, we've got the, the Future Land Use Plan on the agenda, you know, we, we went through our, our general plan, um, you know, in our retreat, and, um, you know, the city's doing a lot of planning, and so, there's really a lot of discussion of plans, and I think the meeting was good in that trying to establish some continuity in our transportation planning between the county and the city and San Juan County, um, and we've got a, a public transit, uh, authority committee, uh, you know, that's been working through this stuff and working on transportation, and so, you know, I've been making some phone calls to the city and committee members and, and trying to, you know, best understand how to move through this because there's, there's a lot of conceptual planning that's been done, um, and I don't, you know, I, I, as we work through the, this regional transportation planning with UDOT, I don't wanna, I wanna make sure that we're not reinventing the wheel on some of this stuff, but I will say that I felt like the, the engagement and the attention we're getting from UDOT is really picking up, and I've seen a lot of progress in that since the hotspot process, and it's never a bad thing to have them sending staff and resources down here, you know, to help cultivate planning and, and with all of our needs, and so I, I think it's great and appreciate the people from the city and the county that are, uh, you know, keeping that engagement going, and I think only good things can come from those meetings, so that's, that's all I have to report on. Okay. Um, at 4:13 and 15 seconds, Councilwoman Hawks came to the room. Jalen, do you, do you, would you like to give any reports?
No, I think I've been absent for the last few weeks, so I don't really have anything to report.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have anything, huh?
Well, I'm gonna go after you.
Oh, perfect, you're gonna let me go first, thank you. Anyways, um, a couple of quick things, um, Chamber Commerce, uh, meeting was good, we had a lot of, uh, people there, it was kinda nice, a lot of board members, but, uh, the only thing that's going on there really that's, uh, interesting to know is, uh, Friday, the April 5th will be the golf tournament. Um, they're, they're trying to get about 25, uh, four-person teams, right now they've got a little over 18, so, so if you wanna get signed up for that. And then, um, obnoxious weed, I don't have a whole lot to talk about with, um, Tim's updates, cause he's gonna be here next week going over all the grants and stuff that he's trying to get, and so I'm not gonna go over all those, but, uh, we are, um, Tony Macosa is trying to, with the State Sovereign Lands, is trying to get a CWMA, um, on the Green River stretch of our county because they're going down and spraying our side of the river, but they're not taking care of the weeds on the other side of the river because that's a different CWMA, and so they're trying to see if they can work something out where we can get interlocal with that, with the other CWMA that's on that side, so they don't have to send two different groups down at different times, so...
For the record, that's a Cooperative Weed Management...
Yeah.
...Association, actually.
Yeah. And so we'll be bringing that to you, and then also we'll get it, uh, you, I, Ruth is gonna send you the email on that, and, uh, cause I sent it to her, and then we'll get it to the attorney, and that'll, you'll be seeing that in the next little while. And then Airport Board was pretty small last night, cause, uh, Judd wasn't there, so you have some other things come up, and so the only thing I've got to mention there is that, we're working with the archaeologists at the end of the runway to try to get that study done so we can get it into the FAA, so we can get that grant going.
Great, thank you. So I, uh, attended a couple of meetings, first of all, Grand Water, uh, meeting was canceled, so I didn't attend that, um, I did attend the planning and zoning meeting, and, um, uh, the outcome of that was that they, uh, went a long way in, in setting up a schedule, uh, and, uh, getting some definitive, uh, direction as to how they wanna move forward on the, uh, charts that we gave them with regard to the moratorium, um, and that, that meeting was pretty much, uh, confined to that, um, although I do, I believe there was some discussion of, uh, the Ballard, um, Mobile Home Park up in Thompson, uh, getting a, uh, looking for a planning and zoning approval for another 30 spaces up there, and, um, we should be seeing that. Then I, uh, attended the Recreation Special Service District meeting, and, and that meeting, um, was fairly straightforward, Steve Swift gave a very good report on what's going on at the arena, um, there's some discussion about, um, uh, them wanting to try and, uh, to, uh, put some fencing up next to the, the ball field subdivision on the south side of the, of the property, um, and, uh, I, uh, offered to check with, uh, with the county to see, to see if the developer had any responsibility, uh, to take part in that, um, and the outcome of that was, no, they don't, so if, uh, if and when they get the funds, um, to do that, they may, they may do that, and it's more a safety issue for small children than it is, uh, than it is anything else. And as already mentioned, I did, uh, go to the UDOT meeting, and I found that quite interesting, and, and everyone that reported on that, reported on it, and I don't need to repeat that, so that's my report. So that ends that, uh, County Administrator's Report.
Did you wanna ask for elected officials?
Oh, yeah, I'd, yeah, I'm sure. That'd be great.
Thanks for asking.
Yeah, well, see, I had the other one checked off already, so I just moved on.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
Well, my report is brief, um, took a day off yesterday, which is kinda nice, but I wanted to say that, um, the needs assessment is coming together, there is one final draft review of the, or one final review and conference call with our consultant tomorrow morning to look at their final draft, um, and then the presentation will be made to you all at the very next County Council meeting, and again, that's about future, five years into the future for staffing, uh, space and interlocal, um, efficiencies with the city and with our own county districts and so forth. Other than that, uh, the Change of Form of Government Study Committee, it has, as you know, been all put together, all seven of them, and we have a draft agenda that Christina and I worked on just to give them a starting place, um, their meeting will be this Friday, here in the County Council Chambers, at your seats, at noon. Uh, these are all, all open public meetings, and, um, some of their first order of business will be this. to select a chair and any other officers they might want, talk about whether they want bylaws, kind of just the convening and getting set up. But also mainly their action item is to schedule their meetings for publication so that the public knows what's going on. And then they'll review some study committee mandates during their first meeting. And then their second meeting, when Christina can make it, she will review the whole chapter of state law that will be about their responsibilities. So it'll get more clear to them, I think, that second meeting. And we don't have that date yet.
Friday.
This Friday at the, at noon, right here in this council chambers. And they will get water, no lunch. So anyway, my office, of course, is mandated by state law to support them with paperwork and paper and whatever they need, clerical services, whatever they need to help them get their jobs done. And so we're very aware of that. And they're, they are also aware that you all had budgeted $10,000 for this calendar year if they want or need outside legal counsel and/or any kind of other professional to get their study done. So that's why.
Yeah.
That's why they don't get lunch.
We have to keep on task. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I think the comments I'm getting is that they are looking forward to working with one another and I think it's, it's all pretty positive.
Good. Thank you. Now let's try council administrator's report.
That was it.
Or having done, or having done department reports. Geez, I gotta cancel these off. None of those. Agency reports, none of those. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard? Not at this time. Thank you very much. Presentations? None? Okay, thank you very much. General business, action items. Discussion and consideration of approving unbudgeted funding of up to $5,000 to compensate Steve Russell. Conflict public defender for extraordinary work time is defined in the attorney employment agreement dated January 5th, 2010, acquired to defend Omar Guerrero and Moab District Court case number 1817-206.
Did you?
Yes.
Final question. Is Christy, do we know if Christine is going to be able to make the table?
I believe she's planning to be here for close session. I didn't know she was not going to be here for this part. She knows she's on the agenda.
I wonder if we could postpone this action item until, see if she shows up. And if she does, then we'll get this discussed on the ground, but it would be nice if she can be there. So I make a motion, we table, table, thank you. We table this item until our county attorney is present.
So second. Moved and seconded that we table it. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Five to zero. Six to zero, sorry. Item G. Discussion and possible action for interlocal agreement with Moab City collaborate on the production of a valley-wide future land use plan and map by August 2019 with special consideration given to the moratorium on accommodations-based development and to contribute unbudgeted funds in excess of $10,000 amount to be provided toward consultation services provided by Landmark Design of Salt Lake City, already contracted by Moab City. Zach, do you want to speak to that?
Okay, so I want to first give you an update on where the planning commission, planning commission is at with staff on this process. And then we can pivot to talk about potential coordination with the city of Moab and their contracted consultant going forward. So as I heard over the, the intercom, you alluded to earlier that the planning commission has started to formulate a timeline for getting basically an ordinance that we're going to have changes to our land use code adopted, you know, prior to the expiration of the six-month moratorium, which does expire March 4th, or I'm sorry, August 4th this year. So the very last regularly scheduled meeting of your body would be July 16th, 2019. So that would, without a special meeting, be the very last date you could actually take action on ordinance before the moratorium expires. Two weeks prior to that, of course, is when you would typically hear the first reading of an ordinance in a public hearing on July 2nd. Going in reverse chronological order, of course, because we wanted to plan for sort of, you know, I don't like the phrase worst-case scenario, but the latest we could actually take action, you know, so pushing it back as far as we could. So July 2nd being the first reading, the planning commission is using these dates to, to work backwards and scheduling the work benchmarks that it needs to meet in order to, you know, get that July 16th deadline. So if, if July 2nd was the, the first reading of an ordinance, then the planning commission would have to take action on a recommendation to an ordinance no later than June 11th. So again, these are the latest we can go in order to meet the, the six-month deadline. So the planning commission, using that June 11th date as a sort of last opportunity for a public hearing to make a recommendation, decided that the following schedule would, would, you know, tentatively work in terms of meeting this deadline. So what we've got scheduled for next Tuesday, March 12th, is a presentation from various representatives of different water agencies, so including Grand Water and Sewer. We've invited a representative from the city's water conservation group, from the Moab Area Watership Partnership, and Mark Stillson from Divisional Water Resources or Divisional Water Rights. Planning Commission will get some material beforehand and then have an opportunity to do some Q and A with these representatives next Tuesday. Just the idea there is, is so that the planning commission gets some exposure to the, you know, agency's knowledge and positions on the availability of water, the quality of water, distribution, water, you know, recent and historic usage, knowing that water as a limited group has been a prominent factor for this council in terms of exploring the moratorium, you know, enacting the moratorium and then exploring changes to the land use code. In addition, on March 12th, staff will provide to the planning commission a first pass at the sort of range of zoning tools that the county has in its toolbox for enacting change. And that's just to give the planning commission a sense of, you know, what the spectrum of their options are. So that'll be March 12th. We're going to start the planning commission meeting at four o'clock, which will give the planning commission time to, to meet before their regularly scheduled meeting. Of course, in this process, we still have all of our regular land use application review that we have to conduct. So planning commission acknowledges it's a big lift and it's, you know, taking steps to, you know, meet these deadlines. So we'll meet at four.
Question about that. Don't we have travel council at three in this same room? Has that been thought about?
No.
Travel council board. Yeah, if you will. Thank you.
So then regular meeting at five, then they'll have to return to this moratorium business after, probably six or 6:30.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I, and you might have said, I didn't hear you. Did you invite someone from the US Geological Department? Think that would be a good idea?
We can look into it.
I know they're very active in the study.
Yeah. We'll look into that. So March 26th, we will also start at 4:00 PM, returning to the moratorium business, but on that same night, host a public scoping meeting. The planning commission staff felt that it was important to get out in front of the public early, give them an opportunity to share their grievances and desires, thoughts on changes to the land use code. With council approval, the planning commission would like to do a joint meeting on April 2nd. And that would be a 12 o'clock workshop ahead of your regular scheduled meeting. And we'd go, you know, until it made sense to end, but no later than 3:00. So then between that date and, and April 2nd, of course, would be an opportunity to just make sure that the planning commission and county council were still on the same page as far as how we're moving forward. And I'll, and I'll send all of this in email as well to everyone, but, and also an opportunity to report on findings from the public scoping meeting. Then between April 2nd and probably the first planning commission meeting in May, the staff, the staff and planning commission would be working on various solutions. So these could be a menu of items that the planning commission could select from, or they could be sort of prepackaged alternatives, much of what you'd see in like a, you know, BLM proposal, alternative A through C, the change alternative. Hopefully, the planning commission would be far enough along in early May to, to then go back out to the public with these sort of limited alternatives. And based on the feedback, then, you know, move towards a, a public hearing on June 11th. So that's sort of the tentative timeline that the planning commission has established. This, I, I was hesitant to send this out or put it into a packet, you know, for your meeting today and then you have the public rely on its date because since the last planning commission meeting, we have been approached by the city of Moab about basically jointly funding and participating in a consultant-led process to respond to our land use planning needs and specifically for this moratorium. So while those dates and that timeline, you know, that I just shared with you was, you know, tentatively agreed upon by the planning commission, depending on your feelings towards coordinating with the city, you know, it could, could be modified. And I think the planning commission acknowledges that those are all tentative dates, but I need to know sooner than later, in particular for the March 26th date, if we're going to be taking a different course. And so I haven't seen a scope of work from the consultant that Steve Moab is working with. I asked the city manager and one of their council members to, to join me today so that we could engage in some conversation about this, you know, potential direction. I, I see it as having a lot of merit. I don't think that you can dissociate accommodations-based development within city limits from that development in the unincorporated county, at least in this sort of 191, but it's like Spanish Valley area. I like the idea of having, you know, dedicated third-party support for this effort. My office, as I indicated before, is pretty much maxed out on all cylinders that are firing right now, which is a lot. And so, you know, I'm confident that we can provide like project management for this effort and be the D's on the administrative side, probably for both the city and the county in this effort, but it would be really nice to have the, the extra support. So, let's see. You know, I'm, I'm eager to see the updated scope of work from the city's consultant just to be able to provide, you know, some more, you know, like fleshed out advice to you all about, you know, the, the next step. I think, you know, we're, we're sort of down to five months now, so we, time is not on our side, of course. And I think, you know, most of us who have talked about this, we should, the city and the county, and I spoke with their consultant, have made that very clear. So we got to get this, we got to get certainty very soon. But I also think that, you know, in, in the meantime, while we don't have certainty about the coordination, we can keep moving on our timeline and, you know, if and when it makes sense to jump more fully into the coordination we can. So. Do you, do you want to add anything or do you have any more updated information than I do?
The last correspondence.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
You two, you two viewers don't, don't like it when you don't.
Yes, no. David Everett, city of Moab, city manager. The last correspondence I saw was you and Mark, you providing some information. I know he's furiously working on a scope. I'm sure he wants to get it right as opposed to, you know, question correction. I think he's doing as good as he can. I did see something about him throwing out the notion of March, was it 18th, 19th, 20th, sometime in that timeframe, having an initial set of stakeholder and public meetings. So he at least, I think, wanted to get that out there as a possibility, acknowledging that we acknowledge that there's a town hall happening, most likely the night of the 20th.
The 20th.
With you all and the city council. So we work around that and other schedules. But I, I think he was really hoping that we could get public meetings going by that. So that's, that's.
So whether it's the, you know, the week of the 17th, 18th, or following, it didn't seem like he had too much heartburn over pushing it back one week. But in either case, I, I think we all feel that getting, getting the public's voice into this process, you know, soon often would be good. You know, what I'm, what I'm primarily waiting to see from Mark is, who is the, the principal of, of landmark design, is, you know, his proposal for managing the coordination without blowing up the number of meetings between the city's planning commission, council, county's planning commission and council. So my primary concern is going to be, you know, can we stay the course? We've developed some momentum in the county. You know, I think coordination is a good idea. We, we're all keeping an eye towards this, you know, July deadline at the very latest. So, you know, just ensuring that, that the coordination can happen without the, actually extra stress. So.
Has there been an interlocal agreement started? Is anybody working on an interlocal agreement with Moab? It's on here that that's a possible discussion. Is that just?
I think the assumption was that if we choose to go forward in, in, you know, providing some funds towards this effort and going about it jointly and agreeing to a scope of work, that that would likely be governed by an interlocal agreement, just given the money. I, that's, you know, I don't, I don't know if that's absolutely a requirement, but it seems like it makes sense.
So I've got a question. Do you have any way of anticipating when we're going to have more information from Landmark with respect to cost and timing? That, that, you know, substantive information that we can use to make decisions with?
I mean, I was hoping for it yesterday or today, because we're, I think, you know, if we don't get it by this week, that's, yeah, that's going to be problematic.
Yeah, so soon.
Soon.
Yeah, okay. So one thing we will want to consider is, you know, how we want to respond to the information that we get from Landmark when they get it to us in a timely fashion so that, you know, that we can make a cogent decision about whether or not we want to put funding toward it or, or not.
Well, I, you know, I think if we can work on this together, we probably put the moratorium down at the same time into the more called collaboration. And if we're working together and not each doing separate studies, to me, I think in the long run, that would be less expensive.
Yeah.
And you're, you put $10,000?
In excess.
In excess of $10,000.
I, I can speak to that.
Yeah.
Okay. We don't really know, but if it is more than $10,000, then your normal process, you know, for procurement of that would be to go out to bid and all that. And that obviously won't work here and we're not trying to do that. But we, there's already a contract in place that Moab City has, as you know. And so we're, they're, they're wanting to collaborate with the county and the landmark can do the expanded scope of. of work, we're just guessing at the cost. So it might be less than $10,000, but this way, you're on notice that, you know, it's not really waiving our procurement policy, but it's going a different avenue than us going out to bid for something more than $10,000. Does that make sense? Okay.
So I guess what I would say at this point, given, you know, the information that we have, is that, you know, maybe the best result of this discussion would be, you know, do you agree that coordinating in a more formal manner with the city is the appropriate way to go? You know, one benefit of using Landmark is that, well, the city's already got a contract in place, so we don't need to go through procurement, but they also did the Spanish Valley Area Plan for San Juan County that was recently adopted, so.
Oh, wow.
I think, you know, generally speaking, it furthers this notion of, you know, establishing some continuity and fluidity across these different jurisdictional boundaries. And, you know, most of us agree that's a worthy goal aspiring to. And then secondly, you know, if you do agree on that, maybe give me a sense of what you'd like to see, once I do receive the information, and, you know, how quickly we sort of pivot to ensure that we're sort of following this coordinated plan. Because, you know, for instance, I need to get Planning Commission agenda and pack it out on Thursday, so like, I'm not going to be able to adjust course for next Tuesday randomly. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't quickly adjust for the next meeting, something like that. So.
So do we have any head nods, one way or the other? Okay, we have one, two, three head nods, four head nods.
I'm excited to see this.
Do you have a head nod for going with Landmark or no?
Recusing yourself.
Oh, you're recusing yourself. Good, okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. So that would be a major head nod on point number one.
Head nod.
Five to one.
And point number two, what about point number two?
It seems like we just need to probably have a special meeting.
I would think a special meeting would be.
Yeah, which would be?
Just a short one.
Yeah, a one-item special meeting.
Hold on. Not a meeting.
Maybe we can calendar that later.
So does anyone up here have any further questions, discussion, or comments that they would like to address to Zachariah and David at this point in time?
And it could be related to sort of the tentative timeline that I shared initially for this conversation.
What question, comment? What's, what discussion have you guys had about Landmark being the design, or the planning company that San Juan County is also using to do their development? I mean, how do we, how do we, how is that a benefit to us, and exactly what does that look like? Because there's a lot of room for improvement in communication with San Juan County, you know, as far as that, you know, their development intentions, and obviously, that's a perk, I would think, you know, using the same, you know, third party. But what exactly does that look like? Have you guys discussed that much in your, you know, your discussions yet, or is that something that's going to be a tangible, you know, return in using Landmark, or just more of kind of a, you know, can't hurt type thing?
I would say it's probably more of the latter than the former at this point. I mean, I don't know how to sort of operationalize that value.
Yeah.
But certainly, it helps, you know, to have a consultant who's aware of sort of the context that's not readily apparent from like the ultimate documents that were adopted. In addition to that, Spanish Valley Area Plan, Landmark is developing a small area plan specifically for the SITLAR parcels within the Spanish Valley. So I think more than anything, just awareness of what's going on down there, you know, familiarity, all ready with some of the, you know, prominent issues in Spanish Valley, the context, and some of the prominent players. They met with my office, you know, two or three times while they were working on the Spanish Valley Area Plan, just to have a better sense of, you know, connectivity between south of the county line and north of it. It's hard to predict, like, tangible benefits per se.
I think one clear tangible benefit is that it offers a door opening into our having substantive discussions with San Juan County regarding how the city, Grand County and San Juan County can interface to make the best possible result of overall development in the county. And that's going to have to happen on some level anyway with respect to some of the infrastructure problems that are going to exist in trying to make that all happen, and transportation problems, the whole thing. So I think it offers this council the opportunity to go to their council and say, hey, look, you know, we need to have some discussions about this, and perhaps get a, you know, conversation going with regard to, you know, producing the best product that we can produce over the next 20 or 30 years in respect to how we develop the valley. So I see it as a, sort of as a door opener.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, the title, it's a Valley-Wide Future Land Use Plan, and if the county boundary line has a completely different, if the zoning just doesn't gel, you know, at that boundary, and we're all using the same planning firm, you know, so I just, they're going through a lot of change, and, you know, this is really positive between the county and the city, but my hope, and I'm coming from a supportive place, is that, you know, that it, that using that firm can help with the communication and the consensus, you know, in the valley between Grand and San Juan.
I'd say from a smaller, granular perspective, just being able to be familiar with the language that is used in their plans and have much consistency of language and terms. It sounds kind of trivial, but it matters so much when you're going from agency to be, to have consistent terminology and language that makes sense. It means the same thing, you know, in different jurisdictions. Having that kind of continuity, I think, would be very nice.
I would put that $130.
One more point about Landmark is that they're pretty strong on the design side of things, and my sense in these preliminary conversations about potential changes to our land use regulations is that there's some desire to further explore form-based standards or aesthetic standards, and Landmark has a lot of experience in developing form-based codes throughout the city. So that is another benefit that I see in using them. But of course, we're not really here to talk about procurement, per se, we're just here to have that context.
So, Jaylen.
Quick question. Since the city has already contracted with Landmark, I'm assuming it's a matter of public record, can you tell us how much it's costing you, so we can have a ballpark idea where we're at?
Sure. The proposal that they gave us initially for just the city's portion, this was back in December, was, say, 47? So, yeah, $47,000, so. That's, give me a baseline.
Right, they won't just split that in half.
And of course, that was also provided to the city prior to the enactment of the moratorium. So now, you know, the timing is compressed more than it probably was, and it includes not just planning documents, but actual ordinance writing, and so that's also going to be added to this.
Sir, do you know, any other questions? So what about, oh, I'm sorry.
This isn't a question, but I just wanted to make sure that the council's aware of the process for budget amendments, and so there are three different levels of budget amendment. The first is transferring money from one line item to another within a department, and that can happen between the budget officer and the department head. Then there's the second level of budget amendment, which is where the council transfers money from one department to another within a fund, but the balance of the fund remains the same. The council can do that in an open meeting. If, however, you want to increase the bottom line of any fund by bringing more money in from the fund balance, but you don't want to shift money around, that technically requires a public hearing. So I just want you to understand that in terms of increasing the budget, like I say, if you wanted to increase the budget in the planning department by $10,000, but you didn't want to move that money from another line item, you just wanted to draw it out of the fund balance, technically, that requires a public hearing. Reopening the budget and increasing the bottom line. So just so you're aware of the legal requirements of.
Which requires time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there are requirements, and, but I guess I'm just saying, if you wanted to avoid a public hearing, you've got to figure out where you're going to take the money from.
That's what I heard.
Yeah.
So you have any suggestions?
That's what I'm hoping for. Do you?
It's a tight budget this year. And so, not off the top of my head, I don't. I mean, you could use a discretionary fund, but that's going to use up half of it right there, if it's the full $10,000.
Let's wait and see what the numbers are.
But I just didn't want to surprise you if you call a special meeting thinking that you're just going to pop $10,000 into the budget.
That's good.
You just to realize that there's more to it than that.
Thank you. So just a quick question, if it were to be taken out of the discretionary fund on an immediate basis, could we then, if we decided to do this, then open up the budget at a later date and replenish the discretionary fund?
Yeah.
Okay, so it could be done on a more immediate basis without a public hearing if we did it that way?
Depending on the numbers.
Well, yeah, of course. I mean, you know, I, but the city has generously granted to pay for three-quarters of it, so I think we're pretty good there. So, if there's no more discussion, I would make a suggestion that we wait for further information from Mr. Everett and Mr. Levine to get the information we need to make decisions and then have a special meeting.
And I think we were at a calendar, we should do a tentative time.
Do you have any suggestions?
Close to that.
Oh, during calendar time? Okay, great. Any more discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, who would be drafting the interlocal agreement if we get that far? It sounds like we might. That would be an interlocal agreement between the county and the city, really for the funding of it, right, and the expanded scope of work, just the agreement of it. And so I passed a note to our county attorney, and she's willing to draft that up pretty quickly, so.
Whoa.
Just so we know that that's.
Thank you.
Our process.
Which is new.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much for presenting that and making sure that we have at least a modicum of understanding of what we're talking about. So with that, we'll move on to item H. Oh.
I would make a motion that Christina is here, that we go back to item F.
Yeah, okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
You're moving so fast, I'm sorry. I thought my timing was solid.
So, item F, approving unbudgeted funding of up to $5,000 to compensate for Steve Russell. Conflict public defender for the extraordinary work time is defined in the attorney employment agreement dated January 5th, 2010, required to defend Omar Guerrero in Moab District Court's case number 1817206. Christina Sloan.
Yes, and Chris, we need to speak to the budgeting issues, but you guys have this attorney employment agreement. Steve Russell represents defendants as a conflict public defender under this agreement for the county. He's on retainer, essentially, he gets the same amount of money. That agreement does allow him to get additional compensation for extraordinary work that's defined as felony cases requiring more than two days at trial. This one will absolutely be a full week. We're looking at probably five to seven days of trial. It's not set yet, we have a pre-trial conference, except for May 7th. The way the contract reads is that Steve is entitled to $100 an hour on this case. This case dates back to October, he's put a ton of time already into it. He would like, instead of tracking his hours and billing the county at $100 an hour, to cap it at $5,000 if we go to trial, and he's willing to take $2,500 total if it gets settled, which none of us expect it to do. No one expects this one to free out. It's a really good deal for the county, that would be 50 hours at his $100 an hour he's entitled to. He's going to spend at least that much. He'll spend half of that just in the hours in the trial when we get there, not to mention, you know, the eight months of work in advance. We've already had a full day preliminary hearing on this, he hasn't received any additional compensation. So this $5,000 would be the entire compensation he's requesting under his conflict PD contract. It is in addition to his monthly retainer, but that's for all the folks he represents on a monthly basis for the county. Where this money comes from, Chris should apply, because the PD budget's not part of my county attorney budget, that's part of a different county budget.
The budget for conflict defenders for this year is $105,000, and we never know what those expenditures are going to be. It just completely depends on the circumstances in the courts and what's happening. And so I wouldn't necessarily say it's unbudgeted, we've got $105,000 in that budget, and last year, we spent about $100,000. So if you approve it, it will come out of that budget. And I can't say, not knowing, you know, what litigation or prosecution's going to happen in the future, whether or not that $105 is enough to cover it or not, it's impossible to say.
All right, that's helpful. So I do think we should take unbudgeted out of the motion if you decide to motion to approve this request. We discussed whether we needed to even bring this request to you, since his contract clearly allows additional compensation, and there was some money in the PD budget. Because he's asking for this set amount, a lump sum versus $100 an hour, we decided it was best for you guys to approve it.
I make a motion to approve the funding of up to $5,000 to compensate Steve Russell's conflict public defender for extraordinary work time as defined in the attorney of employment agreement dated January 5th, 2010, requiring, required to defend Omar Guerrero in Moab District Court's 1817206, and authorize chair to sign all associated documents.
You have a second?
Yeah, I'll take it now.
Seconded by Jaylen and Greg.
Hope there's no more murders, huh?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion?
Or discussion?
You guys give Terry a break, come on.
Yeah, give me a break. I just spent the whole day in a dentist's chair, and I'm high from nerve gas or whatever they give you. No. Discussion?
Yeah. Just, I would, I'm just looking back over the budgeting documents, and if I have the right line item, it looks like over, since 2013, we have not used the entire $100,000 that was usually budgeted. Closest we came Closest we came was 90,000, so I think that was a good move. Thank you. Now we're here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
He'll be the judge of that.
No, I won't. I'm looking...
We've got a bunch of former chairs.
I'm looking for all the help I can get, believe me. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Six to zero. Got it. Okay, moving to item H. Approving Budget Advisory Board Directive, Councilman Member Wells.
Okay, so in the packet, there's just a directive statement that I typed up, and this is just to formalize the various discussions about cost sharing with our friends at the city, kind of get us out of hodgepodge informal discussions. And so we put together, created a budget advisory board that's doing a fine job with our fiscal planning. And the chair of the budget advisory board, our clerk auditor, served as a county council member, has got good knowledge of the overlap between the city and county. And so really, this is just to give them formal consent from the county council, you know, to identify opportunities where they may exist and to assign someone from that body to engage with the city on those opportunities. We are awaiting the results of our needs assessment that we did include, you know, looking at interlocal efficiencies. And we've seen a draft. It's very general and broad. I'm a bit underwhelmed by it. But, and then I'm sure that there will be some ideas of these opportunities from the budget advisory board themselves. If any of the council members has ideas or concepts, you know, they can send an email to members of the budget advisory board, you know, to encourage that or jump in themselves. You know, minus a quorum, I'm sure they'd be welcome to have council members join those meetings. I've joined in, you know, before. There's a section from our county plan under role of the council, including the directive statement, Section 249, role of the council. The council is also encouraged to fully cooperate with the city of Moab and other government entities and to fully utilize all mechanisms legally and practically available to consolidate and share governmental services, functions, and facilities in order to maximize governmental efficiency in economy. So this is just, in my mind, kind of buttoning up loose ends. And, you know, the chairman of the board is here with us, and so, you know, just to be formal, I guess with the motion, it would just give Ruth the go-ahead to just send this an email to the members of the budget advisory board. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve and have Ruth Dillon deliver the following directive statement to the Grand County Budget Advisory Board.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. He calls for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
You are moving right along.
Motion carries, six to zero. Item number I, approving volunteer appointments to district and county boards and commissions, the Recreation Special Service District Board and the Solid Waste Special Service District Board, both whom have applicants that they would like us to approve.
This is the Recreation one.
I'm sorry?
This is Councilmember Morris, it looks like.
Recreation Special, yep, yep. We did approve the recommendation, or the application at the meeting, and I don't have that in front of me, but we did approve it and pass it along.
I would make a motion to approve the appointment of Patricia Jones to serve on the Rec Special Service District Board with term expiring 12/31/2022, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Great, thank you. Is there a second? Mary, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero. Point number two, Solid Waste District.
Okay, we met on February 21 and interviewed two candidates, Sarah Melinkoff and Chad Harris. Sarah really didn't want to serve on the board. She more wanted to express her desire to have a more formal agreement between the Solid Waste Special Service District and her nonprofit Moab Solutions. So even though we had two applicants, there was really only one that wanted the job, and so we approved hiring Chad Harris, or not hiring, appointing Chad Harris to the Solid Waste Special Service District Board. So I move to approve the appointment of Chad Harris to serve on the Solid Waste Special Service District Number One Board with the term expiring 12/31/2022, and authorize the chair to sign all associated documents.
Second. Discussion.
What a great resume he's got for that board.
Oh, definitely.
That's unbelievable.
I was really, really excited because he's coming with a lot of knowledge.
Yeah, the recycling that he's put together out the potash mine. Nothing like an environmental engineer for a solid waste district. Very good.
So are you fully boarded now? Yes, finally. Well, no, we weren't that long. I think Janet was already there, but it's hard to tell behind those. We just keep track.
So, call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Six, zero. Motion carries.
Wow, we are at consent agenda.
Consent agenda items. We have five consent agenda items. Does anybody want to read them for me?
I'll roll through them quick. Item J, ratifying the chair's signature on a client authorization to authorize and instruct Ballard Spar LLP to transfer Grand County Public Finance files and transcripts for the past 15 years to Gilmore and Bell PC as bond counsel. Item K, approving application for retail beer license at Spring Hill Suites by Marriott Moab located at 1865 North Highway 191. Item L, approving application for retail wine license at Spanish Valley Vineyards and Winery located at 4710 Zimmerman Lane. Item N, adopting proposed resolution approving the Borochewski Minor Record Survey at Tulot Subdivision located at 1911 Shumway Lane. Item N, approving third revision of Amendment Four, the Cooperative Management Agreement between the Bureau of Land Management and Grand County, Utah, providing for public safety resource protection and recreation management and maintenance in the Sand Flats Recreation Area related to a storage building.
Terry.
This is it. I'd like to make a motion that we pass item J, L, M, and N.
All those in favor? Oh, wait, discussion, discussion, discussion. Sorry. Okay, so we're clear that we're doing J, L, M, N, N. Is that correct?
Discussion, so no?
Um, because I have a, and so I'd like to recuse myself on that one, so I'd like to figure out how I'm supposed to bring that back.
Oh, somebody else can make a motion.
Why don't we just have someone else make a motion?
We'll have two motions. Yeah, good, okay.
So I would make a substitute motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Mary.
I've seconded that motion, substitute motion.
Any discussion?
Well, I would just say that, do you really not want to have a vote on the rest of them? It's probably...
That's what I'm trying to get at, because I'd like to have a vote on all the rest of them, but I've got to recuse myself.
So I would...
Let's just pull it out and do two.
So, yeah, I'd just take Rory's motion and then deal with K after you're done with that. That way Rory gets to vote on the others.
Thank you. Yep. Do we have any discussion on...
So all of them, the substitute motion.
Do we have any discussion on J, L, M, and N?
Yes. Just a quick question on the Borochewski Minor Record Survey. I don't have it right in front of me because I haven't scrolled all the way through the documents, but when I looked through earlier today, it looked like there was a part on the documents supporting that that said something about a...
Which one is this?
Trailer...
Tell me.
Trailer park. I should have got there. I will get there. It's just a very long one. Up to that, up to that one now. In red at the bottom of page... Ah, okay. At the bottom of page 27 of the packet, so I don't know what that is for you who have the hard copy, but on the PDF, it's page 27. In red, it says, "The county engineer and road supervisor reviewed post campground plans and find them in compliance with county standards." So just wondering, is there a campground plan for this? And I'm thinking, obviously not, because I don't think...
I think they attached a page accidentally to it because that's on Harvard, not their paper.
That's what I was thinking. I don't think we can do that in a minor record survey.
I noticed that last night.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks for clarifying that, Lucas. Yeah, appreciate that.
Okay.
So, do we want to...
Amendment?
How do you want to handle that? Approve that, less that page?
Well, is it in the resolution? You're approving the resolution?
Yes. But we're probably fine.
Just approving the resolution. And it's not in the resolution?
I did not read it in the resolution. Not at all certain.
Did you read the resolution?
Yes, I did.
I did too, I was asking. I didn't see it either.
I didn't see the resolution when I read it, so...
So, we can approve it. Start again.
All right, then I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Carries, okay. Undertained motion for item...
Didn't you recuse yourself?
K.
Oh, okay, got it.
Um...
Yeah.
Somebody make a motion for item K.
Item K.
I move to approve item K, the consent agenda, approving application for retail beer license at Spring Hill Suites by Marriott Moab located at 1865 North Highway 191.
Do I have a second for this?
I'm ready for the chair to sign all associated documents.
Seconded by Greg. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those recusing? One. Okay, thank you very much for that. Discussion items. Agenda item O, discussion on calendar items and public notices. Ruth Dillon, council administrator.
I will hit it. So, starting with your March calendar, beginning next week, the BLM meets all week long with our councilmember Greg Halliday, and to whatever degree our road supervisor can attend as well, for travel management planning. And that's going to be several meetings for the rest of the year, but that's one long, long meeting. That begins on the 11th. At 1:45, I definitely want to be sure you all hear this, you are all invited by Rest Von Koch to have an opportunity to be escorted to see the Umtres sites. That is to meet, if you want to go, he needs to know, and he needs to know your full legal name, and I don't know what all, I think it's for clearances, but would be meeting citizenship. So there are caravan of vehicles, I think we're expecting about close to 30 people.
A lot of state people.
A lot of state people, thank you, yes. Division of Air Quality, Division of Environmental Quality, I can't even remember who all. Anyway, we're to meet at the stairs here at 1:45 on the 11th, be ready to hit the vehicle and get going. They're not going to wait around, so I suggest 1:30. That is on Monday, the 11th. I'm going to try to make that myself. Tuesday, you heard from Zachariah, Planning Commission now is four o'clock, not five o'clock, and we will get the travel council board situated to a different location, most likely. We have on the 19th, it's been announced, but, or maybe it hasn't been, a two o'clock county council workshop. You all suggested that as a date and time, as a follow-up to your retreat. You may recall that the afternoon items from the council retreat of February 19th didn't get addressed, and so that's the purpose of that meeting on the 19th here in the chambers. On the 20th, we're trying to get together a Moab City and County Council joint meeting with Representative John Curtis here. We're looking at 5:30. A draft agenda has been circulated to you all. We were thinking maybe just one kind of dialogical topic. The one that's been suggested has come from our travel council board chair, unsolicited, having to do with how we might could begin collecting TRT monies on, for campsites, especially along public lands. Thus, 7 o'clock is the congressman's town hall. That is not a joint city-county, anything to do with us, town hall, other than to be there as his participant. I should be getting a flyer out to the press and so on from his staffer Lori here pretty soon. On the 21st, CCP Canyon Country Partnership meets this time in price. And on your dais is a new March, but I'll just tell you real quickly, the only change is that 11:30, the Local Emergency Planning Committee will meet on the 21st. I think Councilmember Halliday is assigned to that one. 11:30 with lunch, and then the meeting starts at noon. Then on March 26th, that Planning Commission changed that to 4 o'clock. And then you all wanted to talk about a special meeting, but maybe we need to wait, I don't know. I don't know if you'll want that for March or April.
I think we might just postpone.
Yeah.
So I don't know if you want to try to schedule when the chambers are...
At least 10 days, probably.
Well, I don't think it'll be a meeting that'll take very much time. I mean, I think we just... On the 13th?
Could you have a car? We just want to know how many can be done.
Well...
What day are you saying? The 13th?
Well, we're just talking about setting the special meeting.
I'm out, I'll next week.
You're not here. Any chance you can vote by phone?
Maybe, but I can't make that a transition right now.
Can you be able to come?
They probably take a break at noon.
Well, could you find that out? Are you going to be in town on Monday or Tuesday?
Next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, be here all week.
So...
From the 11th through the 15th.
But those...
Okay, so meeting all day, every day. Oh, my goodness. Yeah, okay. So maybe you could check and just see, because I think that our special meeting, once we get the information we need, shouldn't take, I mean, I can't see it taking very long.
Yeah, we'd have to take, like, our last special meeting by noon.
Yeah, I mean, I'll call in if I can. The only reason I wouldn't is buzz out a signal as possible.
Yeah.
I'll...
I'll pick it up. Yes.
You could even step out in the hall and call, sort of like in a meeting.
But find out what would work for you, Greg. Maybe at noon or 11:30 or whenever they take a break or whatever. And, you know, we could do it... Is Wednesday the most comfortable? And we will have to see about your schedule. Is Wednesday the most comfortable for you two or Monday or Tuesday or what?
Or we could do it like, how many people are going, how many are in Washington and Virginia?
I am not.
Well, since we were going to be here, if we did it on the 11th, if we did it like one, one from 15 even.
Are you going to be back for, oh, yeah, before, yeah, okay. Well, one would work for me even.
One for three, so there's one, two, three, possibly.
Possibly four, and if Greg...
Could you call it?
Yeah.
So let's do it one on the 11th and make sure that they're going to be tight, all...
We'll make it happen.
Okay.
So let's just remember, we will have to have our information before 1 o'clock on the 11th. on Friday, otherwise we have to come in over the weekend to, I guess we could do that, post the agenda.
Post the agenda.
Yeah. We'll post the agenda either way, but it's, you know, it's a little bit of a hassle and extra work. But, so one o'clock on the eleventh, is that what I heard? Here in the chambers? The chambers is available all day?
Here in the chambers, and we'll be here on the dot at one, so nobody gets held up. Then if, Greg, if it works for you, is your meeting down?
The other.
Yeah, south of town. You know, if it worked for you, it'd be great to have you poke your head in. Then we can get that resolved for the, you know, for Zachariah and the city and stuff.
We're just seeing if we could potentially have the interloc already as well. Possibly. The main thing you'll be voting for is whether to move forward, spend the money.
Yep.
Right? And with the expanded scope.
Yeah, we just need to make a commitment to landmark into the city.
Okay, I have it for one o'clock, Monday, the eleventh.
Okay.
Okay. So that takes care of March. Let's move to April, unless anyone has anything for March? Okay.
I have something for March. I have for council members, this invitation, the Grand County School District is having a, and while this is strictly county business, it does concern all the community. They're having an information night to have the architects go over plans for the new middle school this Thursday, six, six-thirty, and seven. At all three starting times, identical information will be given, so there's three options that night. And they wanted, even though this is a public meeting, they wanted all of our council members to have a special invitation, so I have brought you your invitations. Yeah, this Thursday, whatever time you choose, if you choose.
So we're going to ask to prolong or something?
I know.
Yeah, cool.
All right, I think Christmas check in there, so. All right.
Eight to twelve is another BLM travel.
What is the date?
Eight to twelve, April.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, anything else for March for anyone? Okay, April, what I have is, April second is another joint county council meeting with the planning commission. I don't know why I said another, it's been a while since we've had one.
What was the time we were going to do that?
Noon with lunch, here in the chambers, April second. I didn't hear back from everyone on that, I heard back from only two of you actually. Is that going to work for you guys? Because planning commission, they really need it to work.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to tell them yes. All right, and the only other thing I have for April is the thirtieth is UDOT's annual visit here in the council chambers at one thirty. Okay, moving right along, unless anyone has anything for April. The events are in your, special events are in your packet. A lot of permitted events coming up, Moab Thaw and Skim Tire Festival are this weekend. Then after that, Canyon's Hump Marathon and Five Mile Run. Then the following week, Mad Moose Beyond the Rocks, and then after that, Moab Rock Mountain Bike Race. So here we go. Season is starting. April, we have fallen peace officers with the pending permit. Easter Jeep Safari, of course, is coming up, April twelfth through the twenty-first, exempted from special event permitting. They do their hosting out at the arena. The nineteenth of April, Operation Underground Railroad, that's a new one. The twenty-seventh is Amasa, I don't know what that is all about, or Amesa, that's pending. And then the nineteenth through the twenty-first, Adventure Rabbi Passover, which is permitted. Rabbi is all caps, so I don't know what that is either, but it's permitted. So that's your special events coming up in the next couple of months. Then I have your board and district volunteer opportunities. We are advertising for the budget advisory board, this is for the citizen person. So we do still have our citizen Zach, can't say his last name, will be on the board. But, thank you, Wes Jezek. But because our budget officer and our clerk auditor are one in the same, we need another citizen.
Another citizen.
Historical preservation commission needs one, housing authority needs one, a board member, district boards, our Arches Special Service District needs two, they have to reside within that tiny district. Rex Special Service District, I think we just filled that tonight, and Solid Waste, you just filled one of the two, oh, excuse me, you just filled it tonight for the two applicants that we received. And then Transportation District, who must reside in unincorporated Grand County, we do have two with different term ending dates. One ends at the end of this year and the other at the end of 2022. If you can help us get the word out about those, we do have these flyers all around.
And Greg, who will be adding the weed board to that list?
Right. So we'll wait for a resignation from someone moving away on the weed board, but we will be advertising for that as soon as we get that. Employment opportunities, deputy recorder one, that one just closed. Then we have several from the sheriff's office closing March thirty-first. That's the corrections officer, patrol deputy, victim advocate, communications and dispatch, and food services assistant manager, yet again. And then our special events facilitator over the travel council has moved on, and so we have that opening and are advertising for that, that closes March fifteenth. And I did invite Kaylee to apply, but I haven't heard back. So that's all I've got for council calendar items and public notices.
I just have, may I, Mr. Chair? Just an update on a component of the special events permitting process. In reviewing the laws regarding sales tax at the state level, I realize that all the admission fees to these special events, regardless of where the business is located, in the state of Utah, the law says that any kind of special event, sales tax will be collected and remitted to the location of the event itself. And so I've started to, through the permitting process, push all these event promoters to actually pay sales tax to Grand County on the events, the event admissions. And I've gotten a fair bit of pushback that way, but that's the law, and if you think about it, considering how many events we have and how many participants are in those events, that's actually a tremendous loss of revenue by not actually requiring or pushing the, these event organizers to pay sales tax on their admissions. And so I went back and forth with the tax commission a fair bit, but I finally talked to the boss of the special events division, and she said, yes, absolutely, they should be paying sales tax on their admissions regardless of where in the country they are, or even if they're international, it doesn't matter. And so I don't know, I mean, I've gotten, I've had some people that I've talked to flat out, say if I have to pay sales tax, I'm going out of business, which, you know.
Collect.
It's the price of doing business, but, you know, as you're aware, there's a lot of impact on this community and government services with regard to all the events that we host. And so, and in a lot of cases, the event, the only thing that's sold is the price of admission. And so I just wanted to let you know, I don't know if any of those complaints will funnel down to you, but I think it's important that we start to make sure that all these event companies are paying sales tax on their admissions to Grand County, if the event's held in Grand County. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
So just to follow up on that, if I may, we're, you know, in the process of hiring for that special events coordinating person, so we will get that person trained up right away to be, because that is the person who coordinates with all these special event organizers. So I will work through Elaine, travel council director, on that, and we will see what, if we can get that going into compliance. Also, I want you to know the special events committee, coordinating committee, has been working on updating the draft ordinance, or not the draft ordinance, sorry, updating the ordinance, which was passed back in 2013, to update it for these very specific kinds of things, so hopefully we'll have something. They meet monthly.
Well, yeah, I actually put a hold on that. I think they're ready to go, and I put a hold on it for a couple of reasons. I mean, one, I wanted to make sure that the sales tax issue was correct, and then there was another issue regarding temporary business licenses that I had to clear up too, but I think I've got both of those things resolved. And so we're probably pretty close to being able to pass that updated ordinance on special events.
So we should get legal review then?
Okay, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Item P, discussion on Arches National Park, reservation system economic analysis, council member Wells.
I'd like to suggest something. I was wondering, because I know Kate Cannon could not make it tonight, and she wants to come and discuss it with her. I'm wondering if instead of having two discussions, if it would serve our time better if we postpone this discussion until the next meeting, just so that we have the people, so Kate Cannon can participate.
Yeah, so what I was going to say was that the economic assessment was, it's been, the release of it's been delayed, has been delayed, and there was a press release that there was going to be an open house on April fourth over at the library, and the report didn't appear to be available initially, and then they later press released and said that they would be postponing until the summer. And I had a conversation with Kate over the phone. She had indicated the report wasn't going to be available until April fourth, but then it did become available after they press released that they were going to postpone the open house until the fourth. And so I think, as Mary has suggested, it would be best to give her the opportunity to, you know, come present to us. She did not respond to me in my invitation to join the discussion. She sent an email to the administrator's office asking to be placed under agency reports, and so I would just ask the administrator's office and the chair to make sure that it's actually posted in the agenda, so that the public has forewarning that she's going to come touch on the subject and that it's not just listed under agency reports.
Oh, for the next meeting?
Yeah. This is a, this is a big issue, big consequences. The findings in the report are going to be, you know, a big topic for the community, and so I want to make sure that people have the opportunity to review the report and attend that meeting, and so. Yeah, it is. So I don't have any further discussion. I would like to give Kate the opportunity to present to us on the nineteenth, and we can engage at that point.
Make a motion to postpone. Item Q, until the following meeting on?
Item P.
P. Item P, for the following meeting on March nineteenth.
Well, it was just a discussion item, so technically the discussion's over.
Oh, okay. There, Mark.
Thank you. So we'll move right along to continue discussion on identifying proposed legislation of interest. Council member Wells.
Okay, I'll do my run-through, and then others are welcome to chime in, just based on our hit list here. So HB, House Bill forty-one, transportation sales tax amendments, it modifies sales and use tax deductions for transportation funding. It is still in the Senate Transportation Committee. UAC has that on a monitor. House Bill fifty-nine, government enterprise amendments, requires a city or a county before authorizing a competitive activity involving recreation or entertainment to conduct a market study and notify private entities that the competitive activity impacts and presents the results of the study at a public hearing. UAC is opposing this bill, it's still currently in House Rules Committee, which means it'll probably die there. House Bill seventy, the Community Reinvestment Agency modifications, UAC has a to-be-determined status on that. It removes provisions that prevented the creation of an economic development project area after 2016. I won't go into that any further, you all can read that, but that's, we have a community reinvestment agency active, and so any modifications to that is something that we're going to want to monitor. I'm not aware of any oppose or support, you know, opinions on that coming from Grand County. House Bill ninety-three, county formation amendments, it removes a requirement requiring a majority vote in the remaining part of existing county to create a new county. It is circled for the third reading calendar, which means it's coming up for a vote. UAC has an opposed position on that. House Bill one oh-three, the Utah IGP Work and Self-Sufficiency Tax Credit is still in committee, UAC is supporting that. House Bill one ten, Representative Albrecht's Rural Economic Development Initiatives has passed. The bill has passed, and waiting for signature for the governor, so an attaboy for Carl Albrecht, when you talk to him or see him. House Bill one forty-five is the Citizen Political Process Amendments. Now, I earmarked this one, it's in the House Government Ops Committee. This is a, it modifies signature sheets for initiative and referendum petitions, modifies the requirements, context of, and the deadline for submitting a statement requesting removal of a signature on initiative or referendum petition, requires, let's see, it amends like the appeal period for citizen petitions. I just made a mark on it because we had the issue last year of the citizen petition not being certified by the clerk auditor and due to a lack of a notarization, and that was an issue, so I don't know if anyone's had the opportunity to look at that and see if it's pertinent to Grand County's situation or anything. I haven't really been following the bill, but.
What number is that one?
House Bill, uh.
Forty-five.
One forty-five. So something to note. House Bill one sixty-four, local boards and council structure, requires a certain minimum number of members of municipal county, limited purpose, local government entities, and local school board, school district boards, councils, and commissions to be elected at large, and men's references regarding local elections by district. UAC is opposing the bill. It's in House Political Subdivisions Committee still, it'll likely die there. House Bill one seventy-one.
Curtis, do you know why they're open?
I don't. House Bill one seventy-one, temporary replacements for county offices, this is Representative Hodder, exempts the offices of county legislative body member and a certain type of county executive from provisions that allow a temporary manager to fill the office in the event of a vacancy, establishes deadlines by which certain actions must be completed in the process to fill a vacancy in a county office, establishes provisions related to an unaffiliated or writing candidate's access to the ballot to fill a vacancy county office. I think, I think this, if I understand this right, this bill passed, UAC was supporting, and this is more pertinent to the council mayor forms, but this could, if Grand County's form of government process, we wound up in a council mayor form, then that bill would impact whoever the next county mayor was. House Bill one eighty-five, tax increment funding for student housing is circled for the second reading in the calendar, so it will be up for a vote soon. UAC is supporting that bill, it allows a community reinvestment agency to use the agency's housing allocation for certain higher education student housing. So I think that's pertinent to us as the reinvestment agency would, you know, as any overlap that we have with USU Moab, that would, my understanding is make some of that funding available, that increment revenue available for housing for higher ed. It would look like that's going to pass, would be my thoughts on it. House Bill two fifty-seven, Representative Phil Lyman's bill's got some coverage, form of county government amendments. Grand County council members have been very active in opposing that bill, is my understanding. It tied at committee, which means that it essentially fails, and it was pending amendments, and so, you know, at this point, they would have to bring it back up to committee, which this late in the game.
Did they brought it back up today?
Did they, and what happened?
Passed.
It passed, but Grand County has amended out of the bill, correct?
Yeah, they amended out, it's still taking away local control from five, five and six counties. I don't see why small counties don't have the same rights as urban counties, but.
Well, if it weren't for the amendment, we would be wrapped into it, which would confine our study committee, so, you know, in those matters, if the train's moving on the tracks and it's going to hurt you, it's good to get out of the way instead of stop the train, so we're out of the way. Senate Bill forty-four is the street legal ATV amendments by Senator Fillmore. It's passed the Senate, and I think it's headed back to the House for concurrence, and- And I'm not aware of any elements of the bill that affects Grand County, but I could be wrong.
I would just like to go back one a bit. A House Bill 259, Straight Ticket Voting Prohibitive, and it's supported by by UAC. It would take away the straight ticket option on ballots. Right now, we're only one of eight states that have straight ticket voting, and only and Texas will not have it come 2020, so we're one in seven. I would I talked to her, and I've written some letters. I think this would take a little of the angst away from the people in our county who are concerned about losing our nonpartisan. At least we didn't. I call this the dummy box at the top where you vote straight ticket. So I would encourage fellow council peoples to write members of the House and encourage them, and it is being supported by. House Bill 259, and I spoke to a number of legislators when I was up there, and it's going to be a hard one to pass.
That that is going to remove straight ticket, straight ballot voting in the state. Well, I support that, for sure.
And it's we're the only, there's only seven states. Well, in 2012, we'll be one of seven. I've already done that. So I'd like to see Utah not.
If you look at the margin of of between votes in like the state and federal races with the straight line party voting, there's always a margin. Like, I think when I ran, there was 190 registered Democrats that voted straight line party, and there was like 300 and some registered Republicans that vote straight line party. And you can see a margin of people there that aren't going all the way down the ballot and voting for county council races or county races because it's unaffiliated. So I think I think it's a good thing.
Or even or even like judges, you know, they won't vote for the judges because they'll do the straight ticket market and think they're done. So there's lots of reasons to get rid of it. So I would encourage people to write.
Senate Bill 152, the Community Impact Fund Board Amendments, that was the the bill that was going to designate a certain amount of revenue that would normally go to the CIB Board directly to the Seven County Infrastructure Coalition. And that's still in Senate Rules Committee, and that's likely to die there. The last one is kind of kind of that I want to report on is kind of funny, not funny, because.
Here's Hank.
Okay, you want to go ahead and report on that one real quick?
No, I already did.
So Senate Bill 209, which is scenic byway modification. And Ruth brought this to my attention, and I sit I sit on the State Scenic Byway Committee, and the bill removes the the requirement of bipartisan representation on the committee, and it removes the business person seat on the committee and replaces them with a like an outdoor advertising person, and that's me. I'm the business person on the committee. So so I feel a little slighted, but it is the Office of Tourism is opposing the bill in that highways aren't partisan and that, you know, it it it's takes away some of the regional control, and it would give the approval of state scenic byway status away from this committee and to the legislature. And so the State Office of Tourism is opposing the bill. I should probably feel stronger about it than I do, but I based off of the talking points that the Office of Tourism provided, I don't support it. It it so when you take the business person off the board, they're saying that it creates a conflict of interest for the outdoor advertising industry. And the talking points were provided in your packet. It it adds a requirement that the highway final design has to be approved. The highway has to be completely built and designated by the legislature before it can be designated as a scenic byway. It diminishes local control of counties and municipalities to make decisions requiring the local economy and environment. It weakens the role and purpose of the State Scenic Byway Committee. And the bill is in rules, and so if we if if you decide that you'd that you'd like to keep me on the scenic byway committee and and not not have these changes made, Senator Hinkins would probably be the guy to call and and keep it in rules. But I don't.
Is he on that committee?
No, but but him being in the Senate, he he can work with the Rules Committee. And really, the Rules Committee is is the gatekeeper at this point in the game of who's bill moves forward and who doesn't. So that's all I have to report on as far as the session goes. I think the.
I think the homeless service provider amendment, I'll do some more on that. But we had a person come down from the state, and I think that might make it easier for us in the county to get more money. So I will investigate it further. If it is about sending out an email and ask the agency.
Okay.
That's House Bill.
Senate Bill.
Senate Bill 225. So I will talk to, I will read it closer tomorrow. Send everybody an email.
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm following two bills I'd like to report on.
Excellent.
I may.
Let's hear.
These are both more in the criminal realm. But Senate Bill 231, it's not a bill that UX even tracking, is the Judicial Discretion and Sentencing Amendment, which allows local judges to reduce felony sentences up to 50%. There has been a big trend in recent years in reducing prison sentences and getting people out of prison. There are a lot of social studies and restorative justice studies that support that trend in general. But we've already had big reforms in the last three to five years in that instance. The way it works now is the Board of Parole, Board of Pardons at the state level has the ultimate authority in reducing sentencing, and so it is a very consistent and fair process at the state level. This would give local judges who are, you know, more susceptible to local pressure more input on the sentencing guideline. So county attorneys across the state as a whole are opposing this, and I have as well reached out to our legislators to oppose it.
Senate Bill 231?
31. And I know that it did just pass out of committee, I think, yesterday, so it is moving forward at this point. And then the other one, and I've gotten a lot of questions about this, is HB 3001, which is the Medical Marijuana Bill that replaces Prop 2, the big change that takes away the ability to smoke the medical marijuana. So people are quite upset about this. And there's a lot of litigation occurring. People have reached out to all the county attorneys to see who wants to join in. It's the position of our office that HB 3001 is legal, and we are not joining in on that litigation, absent counsel interest, but Matt and I do not have an interest in that.
What was the status of that one?
As far as I know, it's it's expected to pass. I have, you know, I haven't followed it recently.
So the logic or the thought is that they can ingest it, but they can't smoke.
Exactly.
Got to be beers.
That's all I got.
So you're not, the reason that you feel to support it, you're supporting something that would lose in a court, that it's legal?
I deferred the legal analysis to Matt. He believes HB 3001 is legal under Utah law, and Utah law does give the legislature the ability to change the language passed by the voters in initiatives like this. You know, if the council's interested in joining litigation, that's certainly something, you know, you guys can direct us to do, but from our perspective, it's legal.
Well, I don't support that bill. I think that's a dumb bill. You know, if you think we can impact the outcome of that, I'm open to it.
Did you see that Rocky Anderson email?
I did.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the basis of the challenge.
So, yeah, I don't I think that there's a difference between lobbying and joining litigation, so.
Right.
Yeah, totally different, that's a big step.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and Rocky's angle is rather unorthodox, I think, but.
Yeah.
I don't I don't I don't think we have the money for anything like that.
Yeah, I read it.
UAC needs a column for support, oppose neutralizes dumb.
So.
That's a lot of them, Curtis. That's a lot. The bag ban.
So do you have any other discussion on the proposed legislation of interest?
And I know that what is the number of that bag ban?
Bag ban?
The ban on the bag.
The plastic bags. Yeah, that was.
It's circled in the House as of this morning. They they have a bill out that will make it so that our bag ban is illegal.
Oh, really?
Can't ban bags.
And they've come right out and said they they don't, they're, anyway, it's it's a myth. And we I was up there talking to people and saying that Solid Waste Special Service District really supports it because it costs us money, those bags, because they blow out everywhere, and we have to pay our people to get them.
A lot of problems.
And then they they get mixed up in machinery, and then we have to take time to maintain them. So it has, you know, I mean, there's an environmental issue, but there's also it's possibly an issue anyway.
I've been fine going back to paper. It's fire starters.
I thought you can't.
If you're if you're organically inclined, you take your newspapers and fold them into paper bags to. That's pushing.
That that sounds hard. That sounds like making an origami bird. Okay. But anyway, I would encourage people to try it a bit. I got the number on that.
Okay, Jaylen.
Well, I just highlighted maybe a half dozen bills that I I mainly highlighted them so that I could go back and learn more about them. But I'm just curious if anybody knows much about these, if you'll turn around and tell us. The one first one is House Bill 41, Transportation Sales Tax Amendments. Do we? It says modifies, I don't know, I can't read today. Talk. Modify sales and use tax dedications for transportation funding. Anybody know anything about that? Do we need more transportation funding? I thought they had all the money we needed.
So we we need to investigate that?
I don't know. I'm going to. I'm just going to see what it's about. Sure.
That was House Bill 230, if anybody.
Right.
Uh, no, 320.
320.
320.
For the bags.
The bag ban ban. Oh.
And I think that that's ridiculous.
Um, on so number, House Bill 59, Government Enterprise Amendments, requires a city or a county before authorizing a competitive activity involving recreation or entertainment to conduct a market study. That just seems like an unfunded mandate to me.
I agree.
Totally unnecessary. I don't like the bill that requires any governmental entity. This is House Bill 78, Representative Albrecht. It requires a government entity that's advocating for a federal designation within the state.
Oh, I don't.
To bring the proposal to the National Resources Agriculture and Environmental Interim Committee for review. I think it started out as approval, so that's better, I guess.
Well, it's how it's on the third. Oh, it's circled. It's circled. So that means it's paused right now.
That may be it for me. Yeah. It's so hard to keep track.
Okay, Greg, anything?
Thank you.
I'm good. Okay. 555, Councilperson Wells and Councilperson Paxman exit the room.
What are they thinking? Don't we not want to go till 8?
Well, I know Curtis had had another thing he had to go to, and I think Rory just stepped out. Okay, so with that, we will wind up the discussion on Item Q and move to public hearings, possible action items. Point R.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not sure our the Executive Director has arrived yet. Remember the emails?
I do remember that email. So what do you suggest?
I think we could. Oh, is there someone here from Four Corners Community Behavioral? Oh, excuse me.
But I don't know if she's there.
Okay. When did she say she could be here? Could we postpone her? Um, I mean, yes, you can. There's a public notice, you know, so for this hearing. So really, we should hold the public hearing. She doesn't have to be here for us to hold the public hearing. I think what we could do is if you all wanted to go into closed session, we could get that done. And then come back, and we can leave a note on the door.
Yeah, we'll we'll have closed session, and then we'll come back for the open for the.
Through the public hearing.
So she can't be here till 6:30?
Yep. And she I believe she said it could be 6:15.
Okey dokey. Does everybody else feel that's a plausible?
I make a motion that we go into closed session pending or reasonable intimate litigation.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Greg, hold on to a second. Mary, again, made the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Motion carries five to zero. So we'll move into a closed session. We'll have to ask everybody to scoot for a few minutes until we resolve this imminently important matter. And Greg did. Seconded by Greg.
Hey, Tom, how are you?
Hi, Christina. I'm actually hoping to get from Jed that they can. I think it's already.
I gotta.
Oh, you did? But we were ahead of schedule?
Yeah. Okay, so I'd like to. Well, you may, yes, please. 6:01. Are we ready? Thank you. So I will open this closed session.
Thank you. Oh, thank you, thank you so much. So she's here. She's on all the.
We're already in closed session. We could.
Well, there's a lot.
Just real quick, come out, do the public hearing, and then there's be another closed session.
Is that right?
Yep. Let's do it. This shouldn't take long. Speakers on the.
So it is on and off.
Okay, everybody whisper, please.
Oh.
All right, so who is?
One more on you two.